I'd like to welcome everybody to Finance Instruction Committee meeting tonight. We have several members present, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Miss Emanuel, Mr. Gentry, and Mr. Leach, and Smith, and our superintendent, and also some cabinet members down here at the board. And also virtual, I know Mr. Lawson's there, Mr. Grady Hunt, Mr. Terry Locklear, and Mr. Kent Brandt from the Planetary. Mr. John, will you give us an invocation real quick?
In the Father and Grace Lord, we come to you thanking you for all the mercy you gave us. We thank you for allowing us to be here on your earth in a new year. We ask you can bless the school system and employees and all this in it, as just in your name. Amen.
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 Okay, I know you have an agenda in front of you, and we'll be moving through parts of this.
Anybody need a pencil?
Yes, sir.
You have one?
If we could have, I could have something.
What you need?
Anything.
Kinda?
Right here.
She didn't bring yours.
I mean, anything.
Give her a copy of everything.
It would be nice.
Get that pencil.
You didn't get one through the mail?
Pencil.
You're a good man.
Thank you.
Okay, number one there on the agenda says Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund update. Dr. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to Chairman Lawson. Appreciate everybody joining us tonight. Happy New Year to our public and everyone with that. Let me ask Ms. Erica if you would share with us how the Need-Based Grant application has changed, what those changes are, and what we would qualify under the new application, please?
Yes, sir. As everyone recalls, we have been awarded a $15 million needs-based grant in our initial application. So part of those changes, the new maximums on those grants. So the new maximum for elementary schools is $30 million, $40 million for middle schools, and $50 million for high schools. So the total would be all of those numbers I, so if we want to build a high school, we would get an additional $35 million on top of the 15 to give us the total of the 50. That's how it works in the new application. The grant funds now don't only have to be used for new construction, but of course, that is our intent to use for new construction. The local match before was for every dollar, for every $3, we matched one. So for 15 million, we had to have a match of five. Our new match is 5% of the 30, 50 million, or the 35, excuse me, 35. And that would be 1.75, 1,750,000 would be the 5% there. They also eliminated the five-year period where they would withhold our lottery funds for construction. So part of the original need-based grant, we received normally about $1.5 million each year for construction, and that was being withheld. That has been removed from the language now, so they'll no longer withhold lottery funds. And it also eliminates, before you could only apply for one grant over a five-year period. They've eliminated that five-year restriction. So it's our understanding that you can request funds every year as long as funds remain available. And the new application deadline for this grant is March 15th of this year. Any questions?
Any questions?
Ms. Erica, if we apply for the additional grant, that would increase our award, assuming it's approved, for 15 to 50 million.
That's correct. Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Cole, could you check the volume Mr. Grady's saying? I think he's having some trouble hearing.
Any idea what our lottery funds award?
Sir?
Awards from the lottery funds, how much would we get from that? Do you know?
We normally receive $1.5 million a year from lottery for construction costs. And so those were being withheld because we've been awarded the 15 million.
Okay, so that's out of the picture at this point, the lottery funds?
Right, but part of the new application says they'll no longer withhold it. So we do have to get some clarity on if they're going to continue to withhold it for five years or if not immediately, it'll be returned because there's a new application. We're waiting for clarity on that.
Anyone else?
I have a question. If we, if we said that we would like to build a new school and pursue these funds, would we have to have the location pinned down in order to apply?
The language before mentioned that you had to have a shovel-ready project. It does not discuss that in the new language of the new needs base. But I mean, the idea is that you have a project, of course, in mind, and you would have to put details of what you wanted to do within the application.
Is there a completion deadline?
March 15th, 2022.
No, he's talking about like if you build something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Build something, Terry.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. You're right, Mr. Mike.
Not at this, not that we can tell at this time, no, sir.
There used to be that five-year timeline that you had to complete the project, correct?
Correct, but there is not, there in the language they've given us now, there is not, excuse me, there's not a completion date deadline.
Anyone else?
Mr. Craig, did you mention that, Erica, that, I know we had, or are you gonna mention that maybe, or Dr. Williamson, you said one time there's three or four or five counties now, there's, are you gonna do, you fixing to do that, Dr. Williamson, or she, the 95 county?
Because of the new dollar amount of 395 million, change in the tax rate formula, now 95 counties qualify to submit an application. And the past helped me to remember, Erica.
The past, it was limited to only tier-one counties, and now it has been expanded beyond the tier-one counties.
So 95 of the 100 counties in the state can submit an application for need-based.
That's correct.
Competition for the money has increased greatly, greatly. The economy used to be, you know, a county like us had a great, much greater chance, but with them doing this now, it's opened it up to, basically, might as well say, the whole state. Okay, item number two, Planetary and Funding Update.
Good evening, committee members, committee chairs, Superintendent Williamson. May I have permission to share my screen, please?
Yes.
All right, we need to hold this up. And then switch screens here, sorry. Okay, you'd think I would have mastered this by now, right? Okay, all right, so. Here we go. Sorry about the delay, folks. Okay, there we go. Hopefully, you're seeing what's looking like the bare bones of a PowerPoint presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and go to full screen, and let me know if you can see the full-screen picture here, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so this is a picture at, you know, I see a lot, but that's the picture of the Planetary and inundated the day after Matthew left town. And there's our, whoops, there's our star projector laying on its side. After the floodwaters were inside the building in the Planetary, and they were up to about, almost the top of the tabletop you see in the back of the room there with the globe, the colorful globe on it, on it. So it got up to about two and a half, three feet, and toppled the Planetary and projector, the one that we've had since 1969. Now, this is the new Science Center and Planetary, and what we're working with right now. The administration very graciously let me use the cafeteria, and hopefully soon the kitchen, at Hargrave Elementary School, to inflate the dome and to set up a Science Center. Now, it's a lot smaller scale, but there's still a lot of interaction the kids get to do in here. And so far, we've seen over 2,000 kids in here since July of 2021, when we reopened for face-to-face for most of the rest of the year. Okay, so the timeline for the Planetary and rebuild has been a long and eventful journey. In December 2016, the superintendent's cabinet gave me the approval to deploy the inflatable Planetary. In January, we met with a group of people in the Exploration Station, and Tim Little committed the Robinson County Partnership for Children, multipurpose room for us to use almost every day we wanted to use it between 2017 and 2020. We saw over 20,000 students in that facility, in that location. And it was basically just big enough, it was like the room was built for an inflatable Planetary. It was perfect size, with enough entry and exit space for the kids to get in and get out, but that was all. But it was wonderful, and I'm so grateful to the partnership for extending that room to us. We, I estimate that we've, we gained about $40,000 worth of in-kind donation in terms of free use of that room, which normally costs either $75 or $125 a day. And in February, you'll be seeing Tim Little, for whom a plaque will be given to honor that, that donation to us, to the school board and to the public schools. November 2017 was the first meeting of our Rising Phoenix Public Advisory Board, community members that, that were banding behind me to get the rebuild started. And they actually have been instrumental in keeping me motivated, if nothing else. They provided a whole lot of support in the community, most of which I never see. But, but they were doing great guns, and they're wonderful. So we moved back to, of course, we moved back into Hargrave's cafeteria. And then in April of this year, I met with astronaut Bill MacArthur via Zoom meeting, and also Representative Graham, and spent a lot of time back and forth with Danny Britt's office. And basically, you're gonna see some of the evidences I sent to them to say, hey, maybe this should be included in the state budget. And Senator Britt included the Planetary in the state budget, but his version was taken out during Senate negotiations. And then about two weeks later, Representative Graham introduces the Planetary and rebuild into the state budget, and that's the version that stuck. And of course, the budget passed when the governor signed it back in November. Oops, okay, so these are some letters of support I sent to the senator and representative, and also to other members of the community who were curious about this. These are all letters from my peer professionals. As a matter of fact, because of my request for a letter of support to the International Planetary Society, they actually have a template on their webpage now, where you can basically fill in the name of the institution and write a bare-bones support letter, plus particulars for the individual institution you're supporting. So there's now a web template thanks to us, thanks to our efforts. More, more support letters. But this is my favorite one. This is from Todd Boyett at the, at the Moorhead Planetary, up in Chapel Hill, UNC Chapel Hill. And that, that one meant the most to me because I look at the Moorhead as kind of like the mother dome of the state of North Carolina, by far the earliest Planetary and built in North Carolina, and I think the fourth built in the United States back in 1932. So that partnership means a lot to me. We're getting a lot of back and forth with the Moorhead Planetary to provide services for our students for free, again, pro bono. So, you know, now this is a packet that was put together by an entity who shall not be named. But they put this packet together to also give it to the senator, and the representative, and other members of the State House, to, to see what we were about and what we're up to. Basically, the design of, the first draft of a design for what a Planetary and Science Center might look like is on page two here on the right. And then this graphic here, in April, I made a whole bunch of phone calls and did a little, did a little road tripping to see various superintendents so that we could get quotes from the superintendents in the region. Of course, Dr. Williamson's in there as well. And Dr. Williamson's hitting clean up there at the bottom. But, but the basic version is they saw it as a regional facility, as well as a facility for the, for the public schools, Robinson County. And that's the letter of support, which I didn't even ask for, from Dr. Atkinson and Bladen County Schools, their superintendent. So that was a very nice touch. And then, of course, the ultimate letter of support for me, one of my real heroes, as soon as I learned about his story, Bill MacArthur, the astronaut who commanded Expedition 12, which you see the Roman numeral four up there at the top of his letter, in support of the rebuild. So there's a lot of community support out there, and there's a lot of professional support out there for doing what we're doing. And of course, now we have $5 million from the state to start the process. And so thanks to negotiation skills of Senator Britt and Representative Graham, we have the item in the budget, and it's been approved. So our next steps, of course, are completely up to you. I'm gonna go ahead and stop hearing my screen. I'm gonna answer any questions you might have for me.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Emanuel?
This may be to you, Dr. Williams, and also to Mr. Brandt. In 2016, 15, when the Nisha plans were drawn for the technology high school, you know, we did include the Planetary, and then there was some negotiation for UNCP. My question is, and anyone can answer, and this basically is the, Technology High School is not the Planetary part of that? I'm asking someone, anyone can answer.
I hope so. I'm just gonna break in here. I'm sorry, Dr. Williamson, but I gotta steal your thunder a little bit here. I've been advocating for sticking the Planetary and Science Center within the body of a larger campus since basically day two after the flood back in 2016. So I've been pushing for this thing for a while. So yes, definitely.
And maybe Mr. Craig, I know he was involved in that, in the initial, the draft, there was a big committee who did the draft blueprint for the technology high school. And then there was a lot of discussion about UNCP and all that. But then initially, that Planetary was within that technology high school. It was going to be at that site. I don't know with the politics and all, where that stands with the technology high school. Mr. Craig may know more.
Well, I will say it's, from my understanding, it's off the table at UNCP. There was a, they got some funding for a science center, and they were looking for additional funding, and I don't think that happened. So as far as the Planetary now, we're looking at something that would be the public schools of Robinson County. This money was funded for the public schools. And there'll be some discussions, I'll just say later tonight, about Planetary and Technology High School, and those being combined. So when we get to a certain point, we'll try to answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brandt, you have anything else?
No, sir, I'm done, unless you guys have more questions for me.
Any questions? Okay. I think we were going down to item number four. Is that correct?
Item number four, A, Senate Bill, the Budget Bill 105. Erica, you're gonna talk about, and the Budget Bill in terms of a study as it relates to months of employment, ADM, and FTEs in terms of a partnership with the community college. Erica?
So as everybody's aware, we intend to share our students' various dual enrollment opportunities with the community college, early college, CCP, and other programs that we have in place. So what's happening right now is we get to count those students in our ADM, and the community college also gets to count those students for their purposes. I'm not sure if they count them as FTEs or what their denomination is, is considered. But, so that, those students that we have are essentially getting counted multiple times. It appears that the legislation wants a study done to see what the impact is there, and it sounds to us like they want those students to only be counted as one child. So it sounds like there may be some splitting between, we'd have to develop systems to, if the child's on our campus half the day, then we would get half, and RCC would get the other half, instead of both of us getting funded for that child more than one time. And the outcome of this study may not show a fiscal impact until the 23, 24 school year, but this is a study that the legislation has approved to happen, and we just wanted everyone to be aware of it, and that it could have a financial impact on the district. Any questions I can answer? And specifically related to the collaborative efforts, you know, in place right now for the dual enrollment classes?
Circle of mess, any idea how many kids we got dual enrolled now? Any?
I don't have an idea. I don't get a lot of student data. As long as they're included in our ADM, that's kind of the end of it for as far as I'm concerned.
Yes.
And they are.
About two, about 200?
About 200.
Yeah, I can check what you do.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just, my point is, this could have a major impact on us and RCC as far as counting these students with ADM and the money we get. So, and we're looking at maybe, as we said, about a year and a half, two years before we find out anything. So just kind of make people aware, this could have some major impacts as far as finances for the school system.
That's, that is absolutely correct. The impact, as Erica's talked about, is we're either gonna gain half of our ADM, where we're getting that full position now, or we will get the full ADM position, which means less students in some of those programs. So that's the implication of this study. Do we receive full ADM or half? Somebody's gonna take a loss of funds.
Dr. Emanuel?
I would hope, I mean, I know that they're doing, she said they were doing this study, and I, I understand the pinch in pennies, but I sure hope that it doesn't negatively impact the students' potential to expand the curriculum. And I hope it wouldn't pit us against them as far as money's concerned, because the students would be the ones that would lose.
We, we had Chairman Smith and I had a joint meeting with President Singler and with County Manager Ms. Blue in terms of partnerships and what that should look like. At that time, not aware of the budget and not pass of this study. President Singler and I talked on Friday, I think it was, that it is our intent to continue to work together and to keep in focus the needs of our students and determine if indeed this comes to fruition, how can we work through it?
And the focus, of course, looks as though it's on the cooperative and innovative high schools or the early college systems, which of course, impact several counties. I'm not exactly sure the final count. I'm not exactly sure to final count of how many districts have an early college, but it's, it is quite substantial. There are maybe 50 or more, I'm not really sure. But, I mean, that was the whole intent of the early college process, was to encourage that those working relationships and the dual enrollment processes between the community colleges and the high schools.
But they're required to do it.
Right.
They are required, the colleges are required to do it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Erica, any idea of what kind of deficit we're facing in that scenario?
We'd have to wait and see the impact of the study and how they would look at doing the count. If it would be, you know, majority gets to keep the child, or if they would actually make, force us to individually look at periods. We don't know enough of the variables yet to make that determination.
And so our state dollar amount of per pupil expenditure, what is that? 3,000?
It's different for every program report, but on average, we get about, we spent about 10,175 per child last year.
Of state funds?
State funds.
Right. So that's the starting point for the math?
Yes.
Dr. Robertson, they might be 200 between 200.
That was just a rough estimate.
Yeah.
200, so it would be 2 million dollars.
Yeah, she said we had roughly 200 for the fall, and she's checking now to give us an accurate number.
And does that include our CTE students? Because that's part of this conversation.
Any other questions?
But the 10,000 is the starting point for the math on losing an ADM on a month.
Mr. Chair.
Early college system was never fully funded by the state anyway. We only get, when it first started, we got around 316,000 each year. Now we get 275,000, but of course, our financial input is somewhere closer between 1.7 and 2 billion dollars to support the program. So it comes from all different funding sources.
Chair.
I'm just thinking out of the box here. You know, for, for a long time now, and it has been critical for a long time in our dilemma of retaining young people in our community to, to begin their careers here and, and to stay here. And, and that's becoming more and more of a deficit. My question is, and I'm just throwing this out, if, if we could, and probably Dr. Roberts already been done, to track the students that are in early college, beyond early college, and where they are, where they've gone, what they're doing. And if we could, to work up some data that points to us retaining more than maybe people think that are staying in Robinson County or close by, you know, who knows? We might get some help from somebody, a governmental entity. And I'm thinking specifically the county commissioner can do that. Do you think that'd be worth exploring?
Yes.
I think they do a graduation exit report, the counselors, I believe they do.
They do, yes.
They do something, or they did do.
They do, yes.
Thing that puts us down to 4B, and let me make a comment. I think you might have an agenda there, and you know, there was a pre-meeting with some legal implications and stuff that you might see us not going over every part here, and that was covered in that pre-meeting. So that's the reason you see me kind of bouncing around on the agenda that you have here. 4B is the approval to build a new career center, science, technology, and planetarium. Thinking that me or?
Yeah, I guess it's Dr. Emanuel's.
Dr. Emanuel, you have a question? The one you asked earlier. We are here tonight to look at the proposal of building a new career center, science, technology, and planetarium. And just for information, you know, we have, we have a $5 million that's come in for planetarium. And again, now, we've got the 15 million needs base grant that we have, and we're in the process now of wanting to apply for up to 35 more million, which would give us 50 million in the needs base grant area, plus money from the county commissioners. Now, there is money that RCC was going to have, but because of this information that you were just giving about the dual enrollment, we can't count on that right now, if I'm saying that correctly.
That's correct.
And, and they had got appropriated 19 million that they were willing to put into this endeavor, but because we're not sure where this enrollment can be counted, they can't commit to that right now. The reason this is of urgency now is the 35 million deadline for application is, I think it's March the 15th, if I'm not mistaken. And all the paperwork and everything has to be done and turned in by then in order to see if you will get that money. Now, keep in mind, if we turn that in and get that, and I'm always feeling like we're feeling good that we would, that's 50 million dollars, plus money from the commissioners. If you want to say, plus the planetarium, if you're looking at 55, 60, 65 million dollars that we would have that we could put towards this. This is not counting FEMA money, you know, that's still out there waiting to see what's going to happen. We're not, not even talking about that. That's another, another category. But this is looking at what we could do for a technology high school planetarium at this time. Now, from that standpoint, there are, looking at location now to discuss that, or we're going to bring some stuff to the board tomorrow night if everybody's approval. I'll let Dr. Williamson carry that.
So our intent is to amend our board agenda for tomorrow night and to list under information, Dr. Emanuel, your question, will it be the board intent, and can we get board approval to build all these program areas in one building? So your question, can we connect the planetarium to the new CTE center, science and technology? And that's what we're going to debate tomorrow night. And if we can agree, we're asked to weigh policy and get approval on that. That's necessary for the application. But to your point, will we build everything on one site in one facility? And so again, we're moving to information tomorrow night, and if we can agree, we're asked you to weigh policy, take a vote to do that.
To mention the sites and they're going to be looked at? Go ahead and do it. And, you know, that's going to be brought up again as information items to look at that tomorrow night. And I know the question comes up, okay, where we build it? What are we going to do? Well, the sites have to be looked at to make sure they're okay. And there's two sites right now that has come and been brought forth. One is land we own on 711, which we bought two or three years ago. It's right close to DOT. I think we bought 47 acres at that particular location. And then the other site is at Comtech. We own land at Comtech, and we're looking at checking on some possibilities with that. The need to base grant that we wrote for 15 million, when that grant was written, the 15 million, it's got on there that the location of the technology school would be at Comtech. That's the location they put down. Now, we can sit here and say, we're putting it here, we're putting it here, until you go there and do some boring and some site tests and land tests, and you don't know where you can put it. So that's the two places that I know has been brought up to be looked at. And then the other idea was, can we go here? Can we build it all together and put it in one location? Now, you know, I can give my two cents worth on it, and Mr. Lawson was on here earlier, and we talked about some different things a few years ago about planetarium, technology school, we talked about central office, we talked about bus garage, and we talked about new schools, especially like one time in the St. Paul's area. And from my idea, the planetarium and, I'm going to say, technology school, they need to be together. I think the science to each other lends that, that those two things should be together, because I think one would benefit the other if they're in the same location. And I think Mr. Brandt, you know, he spoke to that also. And some of us a couple of years ago went up to High Point University. Now, we're not going to build anything like they had, but they had one unbelievable place there that combined science and technology and just anything in that stem area you could think of. It was just an unbelievable facility. But now, that facility, I don't know how many millions of dollars it cost, but it was unbelievable. But again, what we want to present tomorrow night for information, and then if we can move it to action, is to go forth with this and some other things, so they will have the leeway here to go ahead and apply for the grant. Because March the 15th, even though that seems like it's a long ways away, it's not a long ways away. So I've said a few things there, I might can answer some questions, and if you have some, please raise your hand. Dr. Emanuel.
Mr. Craig, and you can probably answer this. You know, we switched land up there one time, right? At Comtech. Now, you tell me if I'm wrong, was, were there some mumblings about the land we switched to that we were not sure it would perk? Was that discussed one time in the history? Mr. Grady might know, I don't.
Well, Dr. Emanuel, let me say, the, the land that's on at Comtech now, that switch you're talking about, I'm going to just say was prior to I came here. I just heard the land was switched and knew it was switched. So I don't know what the situation is with what we have now. I do know there has been some conversation about our land there at Comtech now is located behind where Native Angels is on that property. There has been some conversation, the county commissioners own land that is adjacent to Highway 711, next to Native Angels, that there's possibility that they would be interested in swapping the land they own, which would give us road front of Highway 711. And basically, it's an open field area. But again, you're talking about the geology, the testing and stuff that would have to be done to make sure, but I know there's some discussion with that. And now, what, the land that was on actually before, I just generally know where that's at. I don't know exactly what was swapped out in the conditions of the two lands now. But I would think that out there at the road front would be better than what I'm understanding we have now. That's just my understanding. Anyone else? Dr. Williamson?
Excuse me, may I make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
The comment is this, if we own land in two locales, it doesn't make sense because by land someplace else, it should be either or to me. I mean, we don't have that kind of money, I don't think.
We're not talking, we're not talking about buying any more land, Dr. [inaudible].
I hope not.
No, no, that's.
We're talking about swapping two pieces.
We would swap that at Comtech for more land at Comtech, but it wouldn't be no buying.
Okay. What I was trying to say, I understand that, but I think, I can't tell grown people what to do, but I don't see the board wanting another area to go build a high school. To me, it should be either of those two, the two we have, the two parcels, either one. I didn't mean to buy some more land, a new plot in Robinson or something. I meant, why would we want another area, and we have those two areas right there that are taken, and they belong to us?
Well, I might have not been clear, but there was no intention in what I was saying to say we were going to buy some more.
Okay.
I was not saying, I didn't mean to imply that, if I did, I apologize. It was just that at Comtech, that if they were willing to trade land down there with what we had, we would just trade it. But it was not intentions of going and buying land. The land on 711 that's down at, close to DOT, that's the land we bought a couple of years ago.
Which has the most acreage?
The land on the DOT is 47 acres. You got, you might have a map in there, but it's 47 acres with some, some trees on it, and the land at Comtech is like right at 35, 36 acres. Fonte, you got a question?
I just got a, a comment. I do think we need to build the CTE and the planetarium together, but my thing is, you know, we, you can always sell, you can always sell land. We got land, we can always sell. People buy and sell stuff all the time. You could, you could sell if you want to. I just think we need to look at the location. I think we also need to take advantage of our highways that we got. We need to take advantage of 95 or 74. A lot of people, a lot of traffic on them things every day. Travel place in our county, 7495. I'm just thinking, we just need to take a look at that.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One of the things we talked about in the pre-meeting intentionally was that when we awarded this money, we select an architect design team to do the work that the design need may dictate well. And, and, and that's where we kind of left that. So that may dictate some of all what we've talked about at this point, depending on the size of the facility, programs, all of that. And, and we kind of left that as an open conversation once we got to that point and had some sense of the design and the need.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Terry.
Yes, sir. So, Dr. Williamson, based on your experience in all the, the building and construction that went on in Hope County, when we get ready to, if we want to build new schools, do firms, design firms typically take into account census information, maybe where the, the population's changing and growing throughout the county in terms of selecting the best
Normally do based on those projections. If you're building a traditional school, in a sense, this is a non-traditional school. We want to locate it as near to the center because we're poor students from, from all high schools. So traditionally, normally that is correct. Non-traditional, it's going to be based on program and based on where we can pull students, less travel time.
So it's not necessarily about population in terms of putting it to where it's quickly accessible to the majority? It's more about a central location accessible to all? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's correct.
Let me, let me, if you don't mind, Dr. Williamson and Craig, if y'all don't mind. We did a study, and I didn't want to get into this, I don't think we really want to talk about it a whole lot. We did a study, Terry, back with Robbie Ferris, and he did a, he did a, he was paid to do a study of the county, and he came back with a map of doing those eight, was it eight K eights? How many, was it eight or 10 or whatever? So many K eights. And what he did is, he didn't, he didn't own the map, he didn't say, we, Randy alluded, we know St. Paul's is growing, the northern end of the county is growing up around St. Paul's. They got, they used to have 1,000 kids at St. Paul's Elementary, set up a little bit, moved some of them to the middle school. But he did a geographical map of where you would put those K eights throughout the county and what schools would go there, like Union or Oxenown or whoever. And then you, he didn't say, well, you'd build it on this spot. He just gave you a geographical area, it needs to be in this placenta. Does that, does that make sense?
That's correct.
That's correct.
But, but, excuse me, may I say something?
Emanuel.
The superintendent said, this is a specialized school, and with a specialized school, the superintendent said, you need it centrally located because of the travel time.
Yeah, I'm not talking about.
I'm not disputing you, I was just trying to help clarify a point.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Williamson?
If I, I do may, and just as a reminder, remember, historically in the past, we can only apply for a need-based grant every five years. That's a change in application. So some of the future needs we can address by applying for a need-based grant every year that they offer that opportunity. And, and that's a major plus for us, because again, we do have a clear plan of, of what we need where for traditional schools at this point. So we think we stand a better opportunity to address our future building needs based on being able to apply for a need-based grant every year if they offer that. All that's a plus for us.
The fact is, we can apply for this and get it, we could come back next year and apply for another one and get it that could go to some other location or some other type of school in the county.
That's correct.
Which is totally 180 degrees of what it's been in the past.
You've been limited every five years.
Okay. Any other questions at this point?
The only other thing that I'd like to clarify is, the old grant had to be new. This new grant, Erica says it can be, you could go and if you kneel to build a wing on it, a facility or anything, you can.
Clarify.
Like next year, we say we're going to, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It says new buildings, additions, repairs, and renovations. Previously, it said only new construction.
Right. So that, that, that goes back to that old theory where we went back and we looked at all the schools that had less than 500 students in it, and I don't we looked at all the schools that had less than 500 students in it, and I don't want to keep opening a different can of worms, but there's different demographics we can look at and we can address and try to take care of them while the money's there, but we all know that the money's just going to be there a short period of time, and once it's gone, it'll be gone.
Okay.
So I'm appreciative to the board that, that you had a vision and you've done some pre-work in terms of future plans and you have some options, that's to our advantage with the change in the grant, so, so certainly having this document will speed up the process for us and help us. Thank you.
Okay, we will come back to B, there's no other questions. 4C, is approval of architect, design firm, construction firm? Dr. Williamson can give us some information on that.
So our intent again tomorrow is to amend our board agenda, under information that we will request that the board approval of Robbie Ferris and his design group, F, F, L and A, to, yes, SFLNA, to help us with the new application, not to employ them as our architect design group, but simply to help with the application, we can take that vote, because that dollar amount will not exceed $50,000. So again, we want to add that under information and then vote to way policy if possible and get them approved to help us with the new application.
And, and part of some background on that, folks, when we did the 15 million application, you had to turn in a building, like we were doing a technology school in, along looking at getting FEMA money, so he's got all the information, that, you know, we'd be some funds, we'd have to pay him, but again, he's got the information instead of having to go look for somebody else to go there and get all that information and pay them to start back from scratch, and again, you're having to try to get all this done by March 15th.
That's, that's the draw with the March 15th deadline.
Any questions on that? So if I can, let me go back, if there's nothing else here, I'm going to go back, Dr. Williamson, to 4B and 4C, are we wanting to put all this on information tomorrow night, and then if it goes to information so we can present it to the whole board, then it could be asked to be, it would be asked to be moved to action item to go ahead and act on it, so we could get approval. But in 4B, we would be asking for approval to build a new center, science and technology, if I'm saying that correctly, and planetarium, and then 4C, we would be asking for the approval of the architect.
That's approval of Robbie Ferris.
Robbie Ferris as the architect.
To help us, well, no, not as the architect.
I'm sorry.
But to help us with the application.
With the plan.
That's right, with the plan.
That's the, so there's no misunderstanding, if we're asking for the approval tomorrow night, we are looking at the science, technology, planetarium, career center, asking for approval to do that and put all those items together in one location.
That's correct.
Okay, and that could be based on, after getting the sites checked and seeing which ones we could look at. Is that correct?
Yes.
Looking at that being correct? Okay. Let me say that again loud where people can hear, the 4B, that approval, and also the approval of 4C for Robbie Ferris's architect firm to help with the doing of this needs base grant, and again, that's the March 15th deadline, and asking for those approvals, we'll go for information item, and then if we can, after discussion with the entire board, then we would look at going to the action item for those. Mr. Ernie, you have a question?
I want to make sure the March 15th was...
Yes, yes, sir.
Me too.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Mr. Gentry?
Mr. Craig, I, I don't want to get too far ahead of the discussion and the agenda, but I, I want to make sure I understand that, and I'm specifically talking about C. Of course, we, we've been given a copy of the proposed plans, and, and I'm assuming this is a prototype, this is not the final product.
What you see on those plans there, Mr. Gentry, those plans that his company did for us, I think it says 2018, that was, I think there's four things on there, and I don't have them in my mind right quick, four different plans of possible ways to go, and then they just did a K8 prototype school that they did in 2018, and that was work they did on a K, it's not a technology school now, that's a K8 school, and then there was four things they did, like a technology center, and then nine schools or 10 schools, that was something they did that we, I guess, Mike, we approved doing some of that, we're looking at one of those options, but it was also forthcoming with money had to come from the state, that money never came, so none of this year was ever started. This was proposals, that option one, two, three, and four you see, and there was different categories there, but I think the one we really looked at cost over a billion dollars, and that money was never appropriated by the state or federal government, so none of this never got started. But you note in every one of these, there is a new career tech high school, and that's why we're looking at with this money now to get started with that one. If that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, and in other words, this, this is strictly a prototype, it's not something that's going to happen.
Right.
It's something to look at.
There would, there would have to be some other things to happen to get this year going, biggest one being money, 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 I'm going to say. Mr. Ernie?
The goal, the goal of what you're being proposed to tonight is to get your career and the technology together, and it's going to be centrally located, so all, all the county students can benefit from it. So that was the purpose of going this way first, at least you've got the first stepping stone to the advancement of the whole county, the whole county can actually benefit from this design that they're talking about.
Any other questions? Williams, have anything else? I have a motion, and just so you know, here tonight, Mr. Vontae's here, he's on construction, Mr. Terry's online on, on finance, and Mr. Lawson is there, is chairman of construction. Could we have a motion that we present item 4B and 4C as information items tomorrow night?
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Vontae, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take care of that tomorrow night. Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.